Rooting people and being cheerleaders for Vermi and Parish and saying what we have to offer and what is good about our parish and trying to sell our parish to others, the better our chances of getting new businesses here and new people moving here. That is not, I am not telling you how to vote, I am telling you my personal experience. For me that works 14 hours a day to have someone when a new business calls and me say, "Hey, can y'all pick up the phone and handle this?" And when you need me, you bring me back into the conversation. It's well worth $6.50 out of my pocket to do it. So that's what I have to say about economic development. We started re-contributing last year, the city of Abbeville. I know that we had struck funding for a few years. And I know that you guys were instrumental in working with me through the Amazon deal at that time. I think it was Victoria Segreira, I know she's no longer there. So I just wanted to give my inside, personal, first-hand experience with this organization and why it's important to have someone dedicated to economic development in our community.
If you'll allow me another minute. I didn't really get a chance. I tried to run through the why we're important and the parcel fee part, but another, a big question is, what have we done? You know, what have we done? So if you'll allow me to elaborate for a minute. You know, the organization was brought back in 2013 with contributions from the municipalities, the governmental bodies, the police jury, the school board, sheriff's office. Everybody kicked in a little money out of the general fund, out of their general fund budgets to bring this organization back with three-year commitments. This was 2013, they started, we were getting about $205,000 a year for those first three years. As you know, in 2016, the oil field kind of fell out, those general funds monies kind of started going away. So it's become kind of a struggle to maintain the stability of the organization. But also on another note, we'll talk about that. So when we brought this back in 2013, we were operating under that 2003 statute, but there was nothing there. There was no organization there. So when we brought this back in 2013, it was, started from scratch. We had to build the program from scratch. So right about the time we got it up and running and built, it's right when the money started falling off. We had, at that time, we had funds to go recruit, we had funds to go take trips and go look at different things and check out things like that. And then as that money fell off, it became harder and harder to do so. So we feel like the parcel fee gets us back to where we started, that $205,000 range that will allow us the stability to continue and focus on 100% of the time doing our job versus 50% of the time worrying about doing our job and 50% of the time trying to wonder if we're going to have enough money to do it next year. Right? And without that kind of stability, you can't keep good people and, I mean, as anybody knows. But, so back to what have we done? So some of the things that we've worked on over the last couple of years is, I don't know if anybody's heard about the KDA Seafood Hub that they're supposed to be, you know, supposed to be breaking ground on in a couple of months, right? That's going to be in E-Rath. That was a, that was a $2 million grant for an idea that started in our eyes, right? That we worked on for several years to get that money, got it, the program's supposed to break ground, it's going to be a USDA-approved commissary kitchen that's going to allow anybody to go in there and cook and package goods that can be sold anywhere, in stores, everywhere. Not like you can now where if you, you know, you cook something in your house, you have, the only place you can sell it is at the farmer's market, things like that, right? So it allows people to, a little more reach, sorry. And the last thing, the police jury was awarded $2.1 million of hometown revitalization grant funds, right? So that's federal dollars, both of those projects, that's federal dollars that have come back to the parish in the form of grants. So the jury was awarded $2.1 million in hometown revitalization funds. They tasked us with coming up with projects to work towards that grant. We started out with 50 projects and in consultations with the jury, we narrowed it down to 30. And because it's not, it's a public and we can talk about it. So one of the projects is going to be in Kaplan, one of the projects is going to be in Abbeville, and one of the projects is going to be in E-Rath as an addition to the seafood hub. So it's combining those federal grant dollars with additional facilities, right? In E-Rath, it's going to be a cold storage facility on, as a part of the seafood hub. In Abbeville, we're looking at a business incubator to help small businesses with, who might not have the opportunities, you know, with capital, whatever, you know, business plans, things like that. And then in Kaplan, it's going to be trying to revitalize their recreation center and the rodeo area. Try and bring farmer's markets or stuff there, bring some rodeos back, trying to bring some outside dollars into the parish. So those are just some of the projects that we've worked on, some of the successes. There are multiple things that we've worked on for years and years and years and just did not see that finish line. So that's the ultimate problem with economic development is it is a long game, you know, out of maybe 25 things that we worked on, one might make it, right, to the finish line. And besides that, it's kind of, we can't talk about it. Ethically, it's not, you know, if a private business is coming to, is having trouble and needs some help, or trying to expand and needs some help, or a new business is coming in from outside, they don't, you know, you can't, we can't talk about that.
You have to sign a non-disclosure agreement.
That's right, non-disclosure agreement. So that's another reason why a lot of the stuff we work on, you really never hear about. And they, if it does make it to the end, they get the headline. And brilliant economic development is kind of a byline on the back, you know, we helped out, right? So it's, you know, we're never looking for the credit, but we're always there to help.
And I will say that economic development, and I know that y'all are big advocates for this too, it's not just about bringing in new businesses. That's a big thing and we want that, but it's also about making sure the businesses we have, we don't lose, right? That's another thing that they work on, aside from trying to attract new businesses.
Defining what economic development is, is always a challenge, right? Because if you ask everybody in this room, everybody's going to have a different idea of what economic development is, right? You might have an idea like it's just a big project like Amazon or Foo Loom was back 25 years ago or something like that. And it is all, it is those things, but it's also being able to answer the phone when a family member of yours has a, "Man, I got a really good business idea, but I don't know how to bring it forward." Right? Well, do you have a business plan? "No." "Here you go." And being able, that is also economic development, right? It's not just the big things, it's the little things and everything in between. And that's the stuff we try to, we try to work on.
We're here to answer any questions you guys have. Now we're up for the meeting. We also have some extra flyers if anybody didn't receive one and would like to take one.
Yes, I'm sorry. Ron's on talk, but this is Nikki Vidal, she is the Abbeville representative to our board. And I'm, if I didn't say, I'm the president of the board at the moment. So thank you, thank you.
The buck stops there.
Huh? The buck stopped. Yeah, right, Harry Kilman right there, right? The buck stopped.
Counsel, do any of you have any questions or comments for them? Audience, anybody? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Nikki, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Gilbo, all of the members that you have, you do an outstanding job behind the scenes. And that's what economic development is. You're not going to be in the Walmart parking lot waving your flag, and that's not how jobs come. And your role in Carnival, which turned out to be last mile facility now, deeply appreciate what you and the entire board is doing, so thank you for that.
We've got a great active board right now, we just want to make sure that we keep them up.
It is a 15-member unpaid board, right? So it's all volunteer, it's a volunteer, 15-member volunteer board and one and a half employees. You know, we receive no compensation for what we do and we just, we're out here, we're trying to help, trying to move the parish forward. So thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Thank you both very much.
Questions or comments from the audience?
Anybody got any comments or questions, we'll stick around if you want to ask or talk to us after the meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thanks for listening, come speak.
Moving on, presentation, well, that's presenting, new business. Item number one, media update provided by Digital Media System, Mr. Christian Lejeune.
I'm almost, it's hard for me to get up, so. I gave each of y'all, the council members and the mayor, I gave y'all a chart, what the mayor's holding up there, and I actually even wrote what I'm going to speak on, on the backside.
I have a TV up here so we can show it on the TV, but right now.
So I just created a chart for, that shows the growth on Facebook and Instagram over two different six-month periods. So that's going to be the first six months, which is January to June, and that's going to be shown in the red. And then the second six months is July to December, and that's shown in the green. The top represents the Facebook while the bottom is going to represent Instagram. I just want to note that everything in green, it has been since I have came on board, and then the red would be the numbers reflecting everything before me, the six months while I was not here. So the, what you're seeing, it's going to illustrate the difference in growth and the trajectories in both, and you can see the impact that it's having. And I do want to point out that this is the first time that, like Facebook, for example, has ever had organic growth, which means like, someone who has liked the page that shared it, it's growing organically because people are seeing that and they're sharing it with their friends, and those people are resharing it and following and showing consistent, like looks at it, like it tracks that kind of thing, so.
Quality of content and the appeal of content to the consumer or the customer is what it is.
Yes, so it's growing organically and more people are just seeing what we're putting out there, is what I wanted to, that's the point of the organic growth of.
So I'm going to take a second and say the numbers for the audience that don't have this in front of them. So just to give you a baseline, we started a Facebook account, I know because July 13th, 2019, actually, is that correct, Mary Barrett? With zero followers, and I think we got, I don't remember what the initial report was that first year. The report that Christian gave us for Facebook, from January to June 2023, is 107,000 likes or followers.
That's the reach, so that's what we're, that's the people that we're getting, reaching.
And then July to December, when Christian joined the team, we were up to 352,000.
Yes.
And then, do you want to give them the Instagram?
And so Instagram, the first six months, so January to June, was just 860 people. And then from July to December, it's 6,500 people. So, and then, we're not also including that, we are reaching people on YouTube because I am uploading the meetings, I have been uploading our events that we have done by AB Films. I started creating a cha, not a channel, but like a playlist, I'm sorry, so people can go back and view those. We, I will point out, we're still checking into our TikTok stuff, there was actually a really, some, a large following that suddenly had started. So we're trying to just check to see if we can start that again too.
For those of you who are not aware, there is an anti-TikTok government law that was put in place, and so we suspended the account for right now, board's kind of weaving through it to see, but that's why we have that TikTok.
It's more like showing town, it was no like government official business on it, it was just more events and the little things around town that we would show there.
People really enjoying. So we might, we might put that back up, but right now, we haven't suspended it for that reason. But Christian's been doing a great job, and as you all know, or if you don't know, we put AB Films on retainer this year, and they've been following all the events through downtown and doing video shoots and then putting together promotional videos that we have to make. We're going to work on a marketing videos for the city of Abbeville and the community, but also we're letting each event sponsor have access to that to promote their own event. So they were at the MLK Day, they were at the Omelet Festival, they were at Sounds on the Squid, I don't know if they did Sounds yet, but all the Christmas celebrations. And so next year, as we roll into this 2024, all of those events will have the videos he created to promote their events for the upcoming year. And so that's somehow we've contributed to help out with the events and try to get people to come this year to events in downtown Abbeville.
Oh, that's it, that's all. I just wanted to just give a quick little update on the six months and just show the growth that we are reaching people within the community and, I guess, thank y'all for giving me this opportunity here.
Thanks, Christian. Credit to you.
Thank you. Sometimes it's good to have fresh eyes, curious minds working for you. Good, she does a great job. Okay, item number two, to approve the special event permit for Sugar Shack Trail Riding Club to hold a trail ride on April 21st, 2024 at the Red Barn, pending receipt of insurance and liquor permit. The permit is for them to access public street for the trail ride. Is someone here? No one's here. Okay, they are not a nonprofit, so we'll just move forward unless anybody has questions or comments. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, hearing with the property owner of 907 South Lyman pertaining to the dilapidated structure and to approve any action necessary. Brian Fisher, Code Enforcement Officer.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So 907 has been a source of multiple complaints, probably weekly complaints at this point because the process has taken so long. And I don't know if the property owner or the, and for property owners here.
Is the property owner for 907 South Lyman present? No, okay, go ahead.
So you should have the images on your devices there. The original complaint came in that it was a fire damage structure. Upon inspection, it was concluded that it was not fire damage, it was actually damage left over from a tree that fell on the residence and water damage had created a situation with multiple types of mold growing in there. It's, the complaints have come in from anything from loose animals, dangerous dogs such, and just general nuisance through blight and other tragedies, things of that nature.
Do I, I'm assuming your recommendation is to condemn it?
Recommendation is to condemn it, yes.
Councilwoman Bruce, I believe this is your district?
I move.
Okay?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Bruce, or a second by Councilman Colton, to condemn the structure at 907 South Lyman and go to bid, I assume?
I don't do, I'm not doing this easily, but with all the complaints that's been coming through, and this has been since last year, and if I'm correct, the guy was supposed to come and meet with Sarah, he came once and never came back.
That is correct. When I, the first time I went out there, I spoke with him personally, and I told him that he needed to apply for a demolition permit or for a building permit. He had come over to City Hall, spoke to Sarah, or actually spoke to Tiffany, and had inquired about it, and then just never returned.
Never returned.
That was a gentleman trying to make a room in the back that I spoke to, but I don't know if he succeeded, but the truth is not in any shape to do anything.
Three walls, no utilities. And you know the neighbors are tired and they're scared.
So we have a motion to condemn, do you want to follow that up with also going to bid?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And a second, is that your second?
One second.
Okay, motion and a second to condemn the structure and put it off to bid for demolition. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Nobody gets here, then.
Well, that's what he was saying, they were trying, no, there's, somebody was squatting on the property with no utilities.
There's no utilities on, but there is reports that somebody is actually inhabiting the place, if that's a word.
If not, I just created it.
At least can, at least. Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Council?
If you have.
Okay. All right, the next property is, the next item might have been number four, hearing with the property owner of 1010 South Miles pertaining to dilapidated structure to approve any action necessary. Brian, you still have the floor, you want to start, and then we'll see if the property owner's present?
Yes, ma'am. So 1010 South Miles, it's another mobile home structure, it is very advanced stages of decomposition deterioration. It also needs to be condemned. This property is part of the Restore Louisiana program. The reason that I brought this forward tonight is because I tried to make contact, well, I actually did make contact with Restore Louisiana, they just weren't very conducive with helping facilitate either repair or demolition of this property. I have spoken to Mr. Miller Willis Brown, she is the granddaughter, I believe, of the property owner and who I've been in contact with.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you own the structure, right?
Yes.
Not the property?
No.
And you are putting the structure, the structures and then the Restore program?
Yes.
So you're asking us to condemn it as part of that so you can have it demolished by the Restore program?
No, actually, I'm waiting to hear from Restore Louisiana to see what process it is. They haven't told me, should I go ahead forward to demolish it, so they could put something new there or if they're going to repair it. I asked for a new home, they just haven't gotten back to me yet.
Well, I'm going to tell you that it's not going to be my recommendation to do anything other than condemn this, so I think it would behoove you for timeline, you'll let the council go ahead and condemn it, and then you just need to give the tax department a report pretty quickly about what you find out from a store, right? Or do you agree, that's the way we should proceed at this point? Councilwoman, it's your district.
Yes. What I would like, you said more time, how much time are you asking?
I don't know.
It has to do with Restore Louisiana.
Okay.
Because they either repair the home or they give you a new home. I don't know where we stand.
So now, if we, if we condemn the home, do you think that that process for you would move quicker? They have to have it condemned if they're going to tear it down, like if it's going to be condemned, they're going to, she's going to have to come back to us and get it condemned by us because that's what we did last meeting for someone.
Okay.
Right, and that's the reason why I brought it forward, because if it'll help her get that situation resolved where they actually come in and do replace it, having that paperwork at hand might actually expedite the process.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to help her, so I move with that.
You're going to give them an update as soon as you hear back? We would like to have an update within 30 days. Yeah, he told me y'all told, but within 30 days if you can give them another update? Okay. Thank you. Go with that?
Thank you.
I have a motion and, do I have a second? So a second, motion and a second, any questions or comments?
Who's in, who's running the Homer Store?
Mr. Jean, do you know that? Who runs Restore? Homer, it goes through Homer's office, it is, oh gosh, I went to a meeting that they told me at that time, they weren't taking new properties. What, who was it?
Do you know who runs the Restore? Do you know who runs the Restore? Contact person is local.
Google it, Google it. Restore Louisiana, it might be through HUD, but I'm not certain.
Restore Louisiana.
So, and.
No, but I mean, you can Google it and out.
I am. And it doesn't say specifically.
I just can't remember, it's Louisiana House.
It's a law factory, so it's.
Yes, it does fall under.
This question came up the last time, and I had made contact with Homer, and he said it was the parish administrator that handles it for the parish.
So Keith Roy at the parish.
But it is a HUD program and funded by HUD, it basically falls under the same money as the grant for the demolition projects, it's just a totally different entity.
So the, he's saying that the parish administrator, which is Keith Roy at the police jury, that he might, if you're having trouble at all, that that might be a contact for you. He works across the street at the, at the courthouse.
Yeah.
He's that administrator, okay? So I have a motion and a second, any other questions?
I'm sorry, I was giving her the number, 337-898-4300.
4300.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, to adopt a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute all documents with Louisiana DOTD Aviation Division related to the apron and taxi line rehab phase one project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? I see TJ's not here, but that's the taxi.
Yes, the state has granted y'all some money, 100% grant, to do the design work on the improvements of the taxiway and the apron, and hopefully after that, they'll fund the money for construction.
Okay, and this is the taxiway extension that's over by the T-Hanger Association, which is on the south side of the airport prop, southwest side of the airport property. And TJ Savoy with Sellers and Associates is working on that for us, and it's 100% funded by DOTD funds. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, to approve change order number three relative to the new fishing pier in Wharf for the Lefee Drive-In Park project. The change order adds work to address a few minor drainage issues, but will retain, will remain within the budget available for the project through LL Oakwood Grant Fund.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Bruce, and a second by Councilman Colton Campbell. Mr. Jean, you have anything to add?
Yes, it's install some drainage pipes underneath the sidewalk to allow the water to flow freely, and there's enough money in the budget to accomplish the, the advantage to the property.
Thank you, Mr. Jean. All right, and Chris is going to give another update at the end of the meeting about that project because we had, we took some action too. All right, I have a motion and a second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, to approve payment of partial payment estimate number five relative to the new fishing pier in Wharf for the Lefee Drive-In Park project. I move. Motion by Councilwoman Bruce, or a second by Councilman Bruce. Any questions or comments? Mr. Jean, anything?
I can tell you that they're ahead of schedule and the percent complete, excuse me, the percent complete is 78%, and the time used is only 47%, so they're ahead of that schedule.
Can you send them the health assessor contract when they're done? All right, any other questions or comments?
What is the projected completion date?
I think they're pretty much done. What they have left to do at the feet port, Mr. Jean?
That's not my job.
Chris will give you an update in a little bit. They finished all the bank work, we did some, we added some more riprap on the drainage pipe this week, so it should be just about finished, if not completely finished. We were out there last week taking a look at it, so. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, to authorize the mayor to move forward with software acquisition either through state contract or by request or proposals, and to provide the updated recommendation at the next city council meeting.
I move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Bruce, and a second by Councilwoman Bruce. Council, as you know, we've had some talks about this, we tried to accomplish this last year, but I overestimated the amount of time I have available to put into it, but our server we have here is obsolete, our AS400 is obsolete, and it's a high priority, we need to transition our accounting software here for City Hall, and we have been, over the last year and a half, looking at multiple different softwares, and we think we know the best fit, and this action will let us go out to RFP or bring back the recommendation to you guys, pending board's legal opinion on how we have to acquire that software. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that, and City Hall, thanks y'all for that. All business, there's none. Departmental reports and updates, engineers, Mr. Jean Sellers.
I might tell you that we have received notices, we sent notices to nine contractors for your street paving project, we got one request for plan and spec, so you might be in one there, but I know that's the two or three others that's going to bid the project. And I don't know if you noticed, on Sunday, how many bike riders were riding around this town?
I saw a lot of them this week.
Me too. So.
Saturday too, we got that health event, there was a lot out, but it's okay. There'll only be more as the roads get safer. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jean? No? Is Kim here? I don't see him. Okay, Kim's not here. I don't think he has anything, or he would have been here. Attorney, board?
Nothing.
Public Works Director, Chris? Come on, Chris, come on.
I wasn't going to speak, but I got put on the spot, so here we go. Okay, Lefee Park. The incident, the project manager, I guess, the little guy called me to go with the contractor, they were having some drainage issues when they're going to pour concrete, so they put some pipe between, between the cement to let the water drain where it's supposed to go. So when I got there, I started looking at the riprap that they put around the entrance to the dock, and it really wasn't to my standards. So I ended up purchasing two more dump trucks of riprap and made the contractor scrape it and put, put some fresh riprap on top of that old nasty cement that somebody had haul there years ago. So I think it's going to be more presentable. So, we did that at the feet park, after cement left to pour. And I can't read my handwriting.
Do I have to sign my name here?
And I still can't read it. Something important, but I still can't read it, I'm sorry. Been a long day. Okay, so that's at the feet park. Oh, bank work, I'm sorry, bank work. He was trying to finish the grading on the bank work. So that's almost done. Like Mrs. Jean said, they're ahead of schedule. It's a real big contract, and he's done good work for us on this sidewalk project right here too. Councilman Brady's park unit is ready. We, Brandon Briggs built us a contraption to lift it, so it is mobile. We have it sitting on the trailer waiting for delivery Thursday morning at six o'clock. We're gonna put it at the Nehemiah project for her cafe Thursday morning so we can all sit out there and eat lunch.
Not till Friday, though. Julie said tomorrow night's Friday.
Yeah, well, we're putting it in.
I might have my coffee out there Thursday.
Putting it in Thursday, so Friday it'll be ready for lunch. And I'm estimating it shouldn't take longer than an hour to put it in place. By the time we level it and get it ready. It has lights on it, they're solar powered, so we don't have to worry about plugging anything in. The sun will charge them, and the lights will come on.
And Chris.
Sir?
Let's complete that by saying that is only possible by the generosity of our local Lowe's store who provided these materials to the city.
And LSU Ag Center, and that was part of the walk ability too. So that all came out of that walk ability grant, the planning of it, the design of it. And so this is something else to see how adding an outdoor dining space on a local cafe, how does it affect your traffic flow, does it get more people using that space? It's actually going to belong to the city of Abbeville. We will be moving it at some point and putting it, letting someone else use it too. That's why we built it in a way that we could move it. But we're gonna put it at the cafe and see how it affects our business. And I look forward to sitting in it and enjoying the state.
And I'll say it again, I said it last meeting, thanks to Willie for building it, so. And I'm sure he's anxious to see it get in place and be used. Let's see. Safety meeting tomorrow, I sent y'all a text message. The mayor has graciously provided breakfast for us at every safety meeting, which the guys really enjoy. Tomorrow, we'll be boudin biscuits.
I'll be there.
I'm trying to switch it up for him.
Well, Chris, I need to come to the office tomorrow so I can give you something.
You can give me something?
You need skin syrup or biscuits. I can get you some of that.
They might provide that, man. And I think that's it, if you've got any questions. One more thing, Tony, I'll check your road out. It needs a massive overhaul, man, so we'll have to talk about that.
Is that neutral?
Yeah, yeah, it needs a massive overhaul.
Need widening too, yes.
I don't know if you can widen it, though. The way it's constructed and the way it's narrow, I don't think you have room to widen it. It can be improved now, you know? So something we have to look at, kinda like we did that intersection for you?
Yes.
We may be able to look at something like that, I mean. So I'll call you, we'll get together on that.
I wanna be part of that conversation.
And I'm working on other projects for y'all, as I talk.
You need the right of ways too, so that's a...
Yeah. And I'm not too sure if it really needs widening once it's paved the right way.
Yep.
You know, it may not need, may not need widening. I mean, there shouldn't be a lot of traffic right there.
There isn't.
Well, Mr. Supervisor, since we're going to do neutral, I'll find one for you to add on to that system.
Okay. I took care of you on the last one.
That's to you and the mayor.
I took care of you on the last one, not even on that one, right?
Yeah, but I'm ready, I want another one.
Believe me, District D gets their share, you know that. Okay, any other questions?
Great job, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Chris. Parks and Rec Byron.
Good afternoon. All right, so baseball registration is tonight at midnight. We currently have over four hundred kids registered. Final count will not be tallied until registration is closed, so I can update you on the total number. Once everything's finalized, this past weekend, two D baseball hosts a baseball tournament. Had seventeen teams in town last weekend. This coming weekend, U triple S A will be hosting a tournament at Como Park. And the current number is thirty-nine teams.
Wow.
Opening day for league will be on Saturday, April sixth. Will formally invite Mary White and Abbeville City Council once the itinerary will be determined. That's all I have for baseball. Basketball report, our Vermillion H are currently, they're actually currently playing right now. At the World Biddy Basketball Tournament in Timpano, they win this game, they move on to the finals, which will be played right after. They're in the top sixes of now eighteen total teams in the national tournament.
Not bad.
I know, that's the only report I have, anybody have any questions?
I have a question, and I think I talked to you personally about it just before the meeting. Does Abbeville have a baseball team that participates in any of those outings?
Um, with the select baseball on the weekends, there are some local teams, but most of them are all playing school baseball right now. So we don't have much of it, because during the week, they're playing games, which you know from the grandsons about rest and all that in between pitching and everything. So we don't have many of our local, um, select teams that's playing on the weekends. Eventually, they'll get there, but you have some that's gonna be playing in the local league. So you have two different types of baseball going, where you have select baseball, and you have pretty much handpicked teams, and then you have direct baseball that has the local community kids that doesn't wanna travel or do that type of baseball.
Now, if you get one local team, I mean, who are they gonna compete against?
Oh, they get good, it all depends. I mean, last weekend, they have teams from Alexandria, Baton Rouge, Lafayette, Bruceord, Churchport. It just all depends on, some of our tournaments later in the year will have some teams from Houston, Texas, Dallas, Texas, Atlanta. It just kinda all depends on which tournament and type of competition level that's gonna be going on.
Like the recreation mall, what, who they play against?
Our recreation is mostly local, so like you have your local district, which will consist of Abbeville, North Line, Kaplan. E-RAF, which we're all in, under one umbrella. But once you get out of district, then you have the region where you start playing against Bulky and Ioda, all those teams. So with direct ball, it's more district, state than regional, World Series. With select ball, you can pick and choose and go anywhere you want for the weekend.
And you said registration closes at midnight tonight?
Yes, sir.
You having trouble finding sponsors?
Oh, I mean, we always can have some sponsors. I can send out sponsor, sponsorship sheets and, what do you go from there?
Okay, I'm being...
Anybody else?
Great job, Byron. Kristen, great job. The people in town this weekend, and double those same people coming up. That's great for the city, thank you both.
Y'all are still sending that information through the tourist commission to let, I know that they don't open anyway, but I mean, to let them know that they're coming.
Once it's finalized, the schedule should be out tomorrow, or if they go, we'll send out an email.
Christian, just make sure we share it, something, okay. Anything else for Byron?
Thank you, Byron.
All right, and Kristen?
Thank you.
My turn.
I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who attended the visioning walk that we had. Gosh, I don't even know the date, was that last week?
Last Monday.
You know, it was a good two days of, it was intensive for me to be with the team that was here planning, and Mr. Joe from Place in Maine. He loved the community, we took a meat crawfish for the first time in his life, so he loved that. But we had over seventy people for sure here as part of that walk. I did not get to see the ideas people came up with. Joe took those back with him, and he's gonna put together a report, and he'll share it with us. He also shared us some of his initial gap analysis information and the data that he was working towards. And I thought it was enlightening for those that were on the strategic planning committee. And I look forward to seeing the further report that he's gonna put together on land use and property redevelopment, and what that looks like in the bidding overlaying with the businesses that have potential for making it here in Abbeville. Also, I wanted to tell everybody that the next event for the planning event will be our visioning session, community visioning session, which is different than, not based on real estate, more based on setting a vision for the community as a whole. And the date is tentatively scheduled for April eleventh. We will confirm that tomorrow, was hoping to get all that confirmed before today, but I got tied up with something else. So April eleventh, it will be in the evening. And we will send that out first. Rainey will let you guys know with Ms. Lynn, and then we will send that out to the community, social media. You know, it'll be on this video and the YouTube channel, the paper. We'll make sure that they have all the information and where that will be scheduled. I am also looking to do something with the high school. And so I haven't, I'm not sure yet if CFEX can do them both in the same day or if we're gonna have to do them separate, but I would like to do a visioning and planning meeting with the high schoolers also. So that will be coming in April. Also, we had, I had a really good visit with SLCC this week. They came and visited on future programming, programs that they have, and what they, how they would like to grow the campus. Some of the work that I was doing with the Safe Routes to Public Places application that I put in last week on behalf of the North Lyman community, which would make our, quite an improved entranceway from J. H. Williams to, from Charity Street to J. H. Williams to SLCC to Graceland, and then we would extend eventually all the way to the bypass and do some safety improvements on the corridor for youth in our community that are traveling. I actually found out that over eighty students at J. H. Williams walk to school. And if you have ever traveled down North Lyman, you can imagine that it's not a very safe way to get to school for the youth in our community that have to walk there. So working on that, and SLCC, I think, has some, a good vision for where they wanna take the community. And I'm gonna continue to work with them so we can see how we can better, better grow that community college. And like Mr. Patrick DuYan and Nikki Doss said, early voting starts March ninth. Get out there and vote. It's important for the future of our community. And that's all I have. Chief of Police, I know he's not here, Lieutenant Hardy, do you have anything? Nope, okay. Chief Drew Meyer?
No, ma'am.
Nothing? And that's it, we're gonna move on to topics for discussion with the council members. I'll start with you, Councilman Hardy. Councilman Bruceord.
Two quick things. March fourteenth, circle that date. Gino Delafosse playing in our downtown free of charge to everybody. You can dance with Kristen, you can eat the good food there. You can enjoy the beautiful music. He is a fantastic ambassador.
Did you say March?
March fourteenth.
Next week.
And it's also the Lash Pass kids.
Yeah, the Lash Pass students.
And we have a lot of tourists coming to Abbeville that day. So two busloads of tourists will be in downtown Abbeville. We're gonna host them here at City Hall and introduce alligator and hogay cheese and all those delicacies to them. So it's gonna be a great day on March fourteenth here in Abbeville. Hope you can join us. And that's...
No, the Sicilian Festival, I forgot to speak up, the Sicilian Festival wasn't enough covered. It's March twenty-third. March twenty-third.
Yeah, March, a lot of good things happening in March in our Sicilian Festival. People of that heritage travel from out of state to come to this. The food is outstanding. And that's March twenty-third, right here downtown, at the Blacksmith Shop. So again, it's time to get out the house, we have a lot of exciting things. Gino Delafosse on the fourteenth, that's only one of the concerts. We are giving free of charge on Thursdays coming up in spring. So hope to see you out there, thank you for attending the meetings. These meetings would be nothing without you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Bruceord.
Yes, I'd like to touch on a few things, mayor and council. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a minute to address the recent letter to the editor that was in the Maritmo. I want to start by saying that I contacted the author yesterday requesting a meeting with myself and the mayor, but that meeting has not been set at this time. I would like to clarify a factual error in the article regarding Tavola and Peace Street. Contrary to the statement made, those streets are one-lane, one-way streets, not two-lane, one-way streets as stated. Such inaccuracies alone show the importance of thoroughly examining our city's roads infrastructure. With the road work starting in the coming weeks, it's crucial to consider all aspects comprehensively rather than allowing these misconceptions to persist. My commitment as a public servant remains towards prioritizing safety and the concerns of my constituents and the city of Abbeville. While much attention has been directed towards the road design, it's equally vital to address other pressing issues affecting my district and each community in which we live. Which I represent District D, I've inherited some challenges, particularly concerning crime and safety. We need attention focused on that. However, these concerns often go unnoticed by the public. I extend an invitation to the author and anyone to come with me that's interested to join me in walking through District D, experiencing firsthand the issues that the citizens of District D are going through. Ultimately, my decisions as a councilwoman are guided by conscience and what I believe is in the best interest of our entire community. The seat I occupy is not mine alone. It belongs to the people, and their voices will always guide my actions. And again, I will say, when I speak with my constituents in my district, the biggest problem that we're having is safety. People are afraid of the gun violence that we're experiencing. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Campbell.
Just to try to echo some things that Councilman Bruceord said. I have been getting calls from the author of that letter that was in the paper, the Weekend Edition. I too set up a meeting between that author and the mayor for March tenth. If I'm correct, and she contacted him, I think, and her secretary, and he said he couldn't make it. But I'm getting calls now, being asked questions that I can't answer. So I refer him to the mayor's office. I refer that person, I said him, I shouldn't have used that term, but I referred that person to the mayor's office, so I don't know how she's...
Sometimes people don't want answers, they just want to complain, and that's what the situation is. In that situation, I did reach out to the author myself and offered to set up a meeting and calm any concerns he or any of his friends had over the project, and he steadfastly refused to meet. So he will continue to complain and not want to directly address any concerns he has, and there's no more that I feel I can do. I've heard the complaints, we've considered all the complaints. But I do appreciate both of you guys reaching out. I know y'all both asked me to set up that meeting, I did in fact try. It's not my fault that they would not take the meeting, so. Any other questions?
I just want everybody to feel that. We'd like to work with the public, listen to them, but, I mean, I did my part.
Thank you. And thank y'all for the continued support and for the concerns of the council members. I turned in some concerns this week too, so we addressed all of those.
Yeah, most all of us were called. And we told them those concerns would be read and addressed, and every citizen matters.
Any, anything else? Meeting adjourned.